All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, August 31st. It is 6:03 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian present.
Veronica Cal present. And Joe is not with us.
He sends his regrets. He's hoping to make it, but will not be able to.
All right. So, thank you. I... Well, could you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States. Our justice stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It is also live on Channel 9 and it will be posted to YouTube after the fact. I'd like to announce that today is National Overdose Awareness Day. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for the sick and suffering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman's additions or additions? I have none. I ask you, Ross?
That would be a first.
Yeah. Public comment period. Is there any public comments? Jerelyn?
I would just like to give a big shout out to the Water Department and to the Police Department for all the help that they gave me yesterday at our house. We had a water main break and I had an Olympic-sized pool in my front yard. And they were there as quick as can be. It was really great. They cleaned up here, so it was nice. So, thank you very much.
Nice.
Thank you to the Water Department and the Police Department.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comments? Nothing. All right, so then I'd like to move on to the 1.6, review and approve the meeting minutes. We have quite a list there. I'm gonna take two off. I'm gonna take off April 13th and April 27th. And we will move those to our September 7th, September 21st meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the March 30th. Should we take these one at a time, or can we take them in a row?
Um, I have format changes. That I, they're, they're, the format is not matching up to what the agenda format had been. You have two different administrations going on.
Wait, show me what you mean. Okay, so let me see March 30th.
March 30th is okay.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the March 30th minutes, please?
I move to approve the minutes for March 30th, 2021.
Is there a second? I guess I'm the second. Second. Any comments? On March 30th. All right, all those in favor?
I'll have to abstain because I was not there.
Veronica Cal, yes. So... Um... What?
Ethically, it doesn't cover, it doesn't carry if it's not a two-member vote.
Right.
You can, you can still vote if you think they're accurate. You don't have to have been there. Well, that's your choice.
So I can vote yes because I was there, but I was not a selectman at the time.
All right, so can we have a revote on the motion to approve the March 30th minutes? All those in favor?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, the next one that I was looking at was April 22nd. Did you have a chance to look at that? That was like the two-minute meeting? Where we just changed the time?
Okay with that one.
All right, so is there a motion to accept the minutes for April 22nd?
I move that we approve the minutes for April 27th, 2021.
Veronica Cal, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Takes care of my vote. All right. The June 2nd, and I'm the one who wrote those minutes. So if there, I wrote June 2nd and July 9th. So if there's anything that you want different. And what day is that?
That's June 2nd.
And this is June 2nd as well?
This is the agenda.
Oh, that's the agenda?
Right, so the...
Oh, it's because of the header.
Right.
It's because we have a new header popping in there.
Right. Doesn't the...
Because I don't have that. I printed these a long time ago.
Okay, so doesn't the minutes have to match the agenda, right? I'm asking.
Well, when I did it, that's what I did. I took the agenda and then I put the minutes in underneath.
So I, I have no...
There's the header that's different.
Right, the formatting on that, I don't have a problem. I mean, the minutes, I don't have a problem with. It's just to match the agenda.
Okay, so what we can do and... Someone's gonna have to edit the header to take that out.
I can do that.
Prior to PDFing it.
I can do that.
And then put the header back in. Okay.
So I move that we approve the minutes for June 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second? I am the second. Veronica Cal, second. Okay, hang on a minute. I lost my agenda. Right, so this is June 2nd. Veronica Cal, second. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor of approving these minutes and adding them without Ross as the interim TA in the header?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. July 9th may have the same situation. Because again, I printed these prior I printed these prior to the header being changed. Do you have it? So what I did when I did the minutes is I took out all of those phone numbers from the, and I just put in that piece.
All right, and I'm okay with that. And that's, I'm okay with the, what's in there. So I move that we approved the minutes for July 9th, 2021.
Veronica Cal, second. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Simple line, right, approved. And then the other was August 17th. And so is there a motion to accept the minutes of August 17th?
Again, the header is which I can...
I guess I'm trying to figure out why there's a different header between the agenda and the minutes. Unless there are two different headers saved and shared.
I think this was changed.
Okay, so which way do we want the header to be?
To match the agenda, that's how we...
Always, yeah. Okay, so so can I have a motion to accept the minutes with the format change in the header?
I move that we approve the minutes for August 17th, 2021 with the change in the header.
Veronica Cal, second. That's okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. With the minutes. All right, thank you. We have a 6:15 appointment. A joint meeting with the Audit Committee and the Finance Committee. And I'm looking to see if Dave is on. I see the Finance Committee. I know we have Jerelyn and Dawn here, and I see that Sue and Andrea are online.
And Sam's on too.
And Sam.
Right.
And the the Audit Committee is me and Dave Chanel, and the Board of Selectmen is Chaz and I, so and the door downstairs was open, correct? So Dave could get in if he needed to. I thought he was attending in person.
I need a closer of six.
I'll be glad to check.
Do you want to check, please? Thank you. And we'll just pause for a minute. And until we get back to that, because I think we have to open the meeting, correct? So while we're waiting for Ross to come back for the Audit Committee, Sue, do you have a question?
I just didn't know if we needed to to say that we're officially meeting.
Yeah, I just talked to Jerelyn and she was gonna open the the meeting for the FinCom. So if... You're welcome, thank you. If you want to go ahead and pardon me? Who's chair? Is Andrea chair?
Yes.
Andrea, would you like to open the meeting?
Yes, I was just about to ask. I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order at 6:14. Roll call vote. Andrea Wood, present.
Sam Grant, present.
Jerome Mazin is present.
Don Keyes, present.
Sulecio, present.
All right, that's for the Finance Committee. Chaz and I are present for the Board of Selectmen, and when Ross comes up from checking the door, I'll call the Audit Committee meeting to order.
How can you call the Audit Committee to order when you don't have a quorum?
Well, I won't unless Dave Chanel is downstairs waiting in the parking lot because the door to Town Hall is closed.
Okay.
That's the, if, otherwise I can't. You're correct. So Andrea, while we're waiting, let me ask you a question. Because, and I mentioned this yesterday when we were meeting with Melanson Heath. No one down there?
There's no one there, but the door is now open.
Okay, thank you.
Old school.
All right, so Andrea, the Audit Committee. Lynn was the member of that. So if FinCom could check in with her and see if she is still going to be the FinCom representative for the Audit Committee. And if not, perhaps at your next meeting, you could elect a new member.
Absolutely, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't have a forum. Oh, yes, I do. There's Dave Chanel connecting to audio right now, so let's just give him a minute. All right, Dave, are you there? And so if you can hear us.
He's muted.
He's muted. Dave, can you hear us? You're muted.
There he goes.
Okay. Dave, can you hear? Ah, he's muted again. All right, I can see him, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Audit Committee at 6:17. Could I have a roll call, please? Veronica Cal, present. Is Dave present? His name.
He's trying to unmute.
Okay. Dave, are you present for the Audit Committee?
He's having microphone problems. There he is.
There he is, yeah. Oh, he's driving, this is why. Dave, are you present for the Audit Committee? I'm just doing a roll call vote. I don't think he can hear me. Dave, can you hear me?
Just...
I see the little dots moving.
Yeah, I think he's trying to connect to the audio. Oh, there you go. Hi, Dave. Breaker 19.
All right, a roll call vote for the Audit Committee. Veronica Cal, present. Dave, are you present?
I have a difficult time with the audio.
There you go.
I'm actually in the parking lot, Veronica. It's like the door is locked, I couldn't get in.
We opened it up. We just opened it up, but you should be able to come in, Dave.
Yeah, try it. Did you just get in with the open door? Is it still open?
Was a rock shoved it.
Um... They're coming down to let you in, Dave.
There he goes. We used to do this before Zoom.
I like that background. That's quite nice.
Oh, I have a bunch to talk to. Where would you like to start?
I'm here tomorrow at quarter of eight.
We have to be at the courthouse and work there for about three hours afterwards. Let me see if I can zip over.
Are we gonna do 1 o'clock tomorrow, Ross?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Already got time?
No, we don't have a meeting until the 21st.
Okay.
But if we wanna keep it, I'll talk to you about sign. Showing them a sign.
I'm interviewing the Highway Department at 10 o'clock and 1 o'clock.
Oh, okay, so let's do later then. Is that good? You can do 3 o'clock, or just send me an email when you're... 3 o'clock. If that works for me. All right, we've just on pause. For people that are in the audience, we're just on pause until we get the Audit Committee member present.
Here we go.
Hi, Dave, sorry. If no one's sitting at those desks.
The Rock wasn't still there? It was, but not in the doorway.
Oh. Wasn't doing his job.
High-tech there.
All right, so I'm gonna call them.
Thank you for saying your boyfriend opened the door.
No problem. All right, I'm calling the Audit Committee portion of the joint meeting to order at 6:21. Roll call, please.
David Chanel, present.
Veronica Cal, present. And so I just want to open with saying that the Audit Committee, we're new. This is the first time that we've been seated for the town. This is a policy that was put into place approximately the fall of 2019. It never got seated in 2020, or it might have been the fall of 2020, never got seated for 2020.
Sulecio was on the committee.
Sue was on the board then, yeah, so it might have been the fall of 2020. We were, I have the policy here. And we were, we are the first seated committee, so it's Dave Chanel for the Citizen at Large. I'm the Board of Selectmen representative. And FinCom currently is Lynn Pinkerton for the FinCom. So we did just talk about that. The purpose of the Audit Committee is to choose the auditors, and right now that's not something that we need to do for the current audit, but we do need to look at in the fall for the following three years of auditing. So that's one of the things that we do. We solicit, interview, and recommend to the Board of Selectmen the firm of independent auditors, that is to audit and report on the financial statements. We also shall review the audit plan with the independent auditors upon completion of the audit, meet with the independent auditors to discuss the results of the audit, the management letter, and the annual financial reports. We were a little late on that this year because when the audit was completed, we had not yet met. So we did meet with them yesterday, and it was a Zoom meeting, and that Zoom meeting was taped. So after this meeting, they were, Melanson and Heath, Heath was good with us posting it. So we will post that to YouTube along with these today's recording. So it'll be posted along with that, so that anybody that's interested can see exactly what they did have to say. And then today's meeting is number five of the policy. Is that the Audit Committee shall transmit a copy of the completed annual audited financials and management letter report to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And with the assistance of the auditing firm, if so desired, shall present the results of the annual audited financials and management letter report to a jointly held public meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And that is what today's meeting is. So we're a little free-form. I thought that there were some members of the Finance Committee there yesterday for the Zoom, along with our accountant and and the Audit Committee. So I was just gonna recap a few things that they said yesterday, and if anybody, if Dave or if Andrea, if you'd like to jump in, or Ross, if you were at the meeting, to say that. So the first, they went through the financial statement with us and pointed out some things. One thing that they pointed out was our use of free cash. We've been using it over the past few years to to support the town's we want to say. We've used free, free cash to fund capital projects and town operations. And they said that's something that we might want to look at for the future, to not use free cash so much for that. They also noted, and this goes to our bond rating. DLS would like to see the percent of general fund expenditures at about 16%. Ours was at 12.08, and then this year at 7.25 roughly. And they would like to see that bumped up. So that's something to look at. They also said that we might want to consider as a town adopting fund balance policies and procedures. How are there particular percentages that we as a town want to see? And again, that's something that's individual to a town. It depends on the town's interest in borrowing, whether we want to borrow or not. To look at the forecast of capital expenses or not. And they, that that's very personal to a town. That it isn't necessarily something where you pick up another town's policy, but that you would look at how the town, what the town's philosophy is for itself, and then establish those procedures. So that's something we might want to look to for the future. Maybe that's something we can do through the compact, community compact as a best practice when those funds are available, and I think that that grant is open right now. So I guess, Dave, if there's anything you want to add?
The only thing I was surprised on was the use of free cash. As long as you use it for non-recurring capital expense, like a capital purchase, I always thought it was a great thing, you know? When I was on the board, when I was in their position, I looked at doing the roads and buying the fire trucks and all that. I never realized in all the years that I did the board that it actually had a negative impact on our bond rating. I didn't realize that. I think the message that I got from those folks yesterday was, it's better to use the free cash to supplement your reserve account and use the reserve account. Not use the free cash as freely as we have done in the past, maybe use it in front of a reserve account, which we never did it the best. I don't know, Ross, what do you think?
My opinion is that you should not use it for operational needs, is what they agreed to.
Yeah, absolutely.
You should use it for capital needs. And I've always looked at it as free cash is something that residents, you folks, have paid for last year in your taxes. And I feel that I'll be put to work versus saving.
Yeah, that's why we always use this, you know, non-recurring, the capital expense.
So you can use it for capital, which avoids taxing them again next year for those capital items. I think you want to keep a certain minimum because it might be needed for a special town meeting to fund something. And you don't want to have to worry about interfering with setting your tax rate. But I believe in putting free cash to work, keeping a fair, you know, a safe minimum, and that's what I think Veronica was talking about, with setting what those minimums should be.
What, how do you feel about the interplay between the free cash account and the reserve account? They discern the difference between a free cash and a reserve account. They use two different terms yesterday.
Well, there's stabilization.
Stabilization, I'm sorry, stabilization.
Stabilization is your long-term savings account. It takes more effort to be able to vote, takes a two-thirds vote to be able to spend that, but free cash is a simple majority.
And I thought that's what they were talking about. I was using the reserve fund as the wrong term, but stabilization fund. They were talking about funding the stabilization fund as a, as a, you know, constant act.
My philosophy on budgeting is to budget enough money for the operations, and that's what the Finance Committee and Select Board and I will work on. To budget for long-term savings, which means putting money into your stabilization accounts to be sure that the employees are appropriately compensated and then building for the future. I think building long-term savings accounts is a key part of finance. I would use free cash as a way to do that.
And that was at quite the beginning. I don't think we had that philosophy, you know, years ago when I was on the board. And I think it's, I think it's the right way.
So Andrea, anything else from the FinCom?
Well, I, you'll have to ask them, but just for me, I agree with what was being said. I'm sorry, I can hear my voice as a feedback. Kind of puts me off.
You sound fine here. We don't have the feedback.
Oh, good, good. The the problem with the use of free cash in the recent period is just to afford one-time purchases if there was so much wanted and needed and no other source of income. So we're kind of caught in a bind. I think we have to restructure our thinking completely in order to adapt what they say, although I can agree wholeheartedly with what's the auditors say.
All right, anybody else?
Oh, everybody.
Sam?
I got, I agree.
All right. So that's pretty much the financial statement that, you know, you can...
Excuse me?
Oh, Sue, yes.
I, I'm sorry, I thought I had my hand up, but...
It was up and then it went down, and now it's back up again, so yeah, so go ahead.
I was trying to get your attention, but the only, the only additional thing, I mean, I I think it's nice, you know, we ended up with more money than we thought we were going to, and so we have free cash. That's great because it either means that we got more revenue than we expected, or that we didn't spend what we expected. Either way, that's, that's good, and it's... Either way, that's, that's good, and it's nice to have some money to spend. However, there are situations where, when you have a good amount of free cash, I think one of the considerations that should be made is whether or not you want to use some of that to reduce the tax rate. Okay, in other words, to be able to fund some of the budget in terms of what's it going to? Because we, Ross is right, we already paid for it. What I'm saying is, I paid you money as a taxpayer, and I gave you more than I needed to. So how about once in a while, you can give some of it back to the taxpayers too? So I just don't want us to think that it's a simple thing of, you know, we got the money, so therefore spend it. You know, I, I'm thinking a little bit broader than that. And I'm not saying you can always afford to do that, but it might be a nice thing to do as well.
Dave, do you have something to say?
Yes, hi Sue, not to address the board, but Sue and I have had this discussion for many years. The problem with doing that is if you use it to supplement your reoccurring budget, you're kicking a can down the street. And that's the problem, like, as one of our sister towns, Peckham, when I was on the board, they did that several years in a row, and they went down the proverbial tube. They just couldn't come out of it. They had several overrides because of it. Eventually, if you use free cash to supplement the ongoing budget, you put him off the inevitable, because very really do our budgets go down every year. Use free cash to supplement the budget this year. Next year, you get free cash you used the year before, and you get the same problem again times two.
I just want, I want somebody, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I, I just want us to think about, free cash doesn't mean it's free. We paid for it through our tax bills. And there's other ways to manage free cash. If you're conservative with your estimates on revenue, then and you spend at least or a minimum of what you said you were going to spend, you're gonna have to, if, if all the revenue things come in a little bit higher because you were so conservative. So it's, it's a little bit of a balancing act too. And I simply want to say that I don't think we should. We, we.
Tiger. Goes away.
A little differently too, by using the trends that we, that we have. I mean.
Well, this is something that we can talk about in FinCon meetings, I think. So Ross, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
I think both comments are correct in that if you use free cash to offset next year's purchases, that is in effect lowering the taxes or avoiding as much of an increase for next year. I think that's sort of the Sue's point is. Use this to minimize tax increases. And that's exactly what happens if you do it for one-time purchases. But Dave is saying, if you start to depend upon it, you will have your budgets essentially based upon a certain amount of free cash every year, which may not show up. And then you've got this big reset, and don't, it's not gonna happen right here, but you don't want a two-and-a-half override because you depended upon free cash that doesn't show up. It's better to use it for discretionary capital items. But when you do that, you're avoiding taxing people for subsequent years.
That's my point exactly.
Okay.
And that's exactly what happened last year. That's why we were so short of free cash that we were in a real bind.
Say that again, could you repeat that?
That's what happened last year. We were in such, so short of free cash, we end up in a lot of respects in a real bind.
Because we had such.
Too much.
And free cash is a double-edged sword. If you've done really accurate budgeting, I mean, extremely accurate, you theoretically have no free cash because you'd know exactly what your revenue is, and you know exactly what your expenses are, and there would be no free cash. It doesn't work that way probably in any life, certainly not in municipal space. And we collectively need to be conservative and estimate our revenues and minimize our expenses. But free cash is also an indication of how accurate your budgeting was. And so if you have a lot of free cash, your budget wasn't very accurate. And as I've said before, you then tax people that year, something you might not have had to do. So it is a very delicate balancing act. And I'm looking forward to working with Finance Committee, Select Board, and others starting probably November to get this going.
Looking forward to it too. All right. Veronica, go ahead, Sue.
Just one more note. In terms of capital, we do have a bylaw that says, you know, this is how much we, we should put in. And the town has committed to a capital budget, you know, a capital expense fund, capitalization fund. So that's one thing at least that we have on the books.
Okay. All right, good to note. One more, go ahead, Chris.
Do we have a capital planning committee?
Oh, well, we're, we're gonna, we have you, Chris.
I know, I can't do it by myself.
And I know the Planning Board has appointed Mike Verosco to it. And we have on our agenda today to appoint a selectman. So there, we're getting there.
Good.
So hopefully.
I know it's getting that tight.
Finance.
Finance has appointed, is it you, Geraldine? And Geraldine has appointed for Finance. So we're getting there, Chris. It will not be you alone.
And I would anticipate working with capital planning as I would the Finance Committee.
That would be fantastic.
There's no need to anticipate.
All right. So I want to go on to the management letter, just because I, Terry had responded, our, our town accountant, interim town accountant. The management letter had two questions that had to do with reconciliation. Let me get the correct management letter up here. The continued improvements over monthly reconciliation. This is something that's been ongoing for the past couple of years. So the current year status, and this is FY '20 that we're talking about here. In the current year, the tax title variance still exists between the Treasury Tax Collector's records and the General Ledger. We continue to recommend the town improve monthly reconciliations and reconcile the tax title receivable to the General Ledger. So what I got on that is water receivables commitments and adjustments are reported timely. Monthly discrepancies are minor for tax receivables. Unfortunately, tax receivables were not reconciled last year due to the pandemic and the loss of a treasure in December of 2020. Reconciliation is now ongoing. So for FY '20, it didn't happen, but it is currently ongoing. And then number two was improve the timeliness of cash receipt postings. And again, this is something that has been ongoing. The current year issues, and that the current year is FY '20. In the current year, we identified that there were still timeliness delays in the treasurer's receipt information being reported to the town accountant. We continue to recommend the town improve the timeliness of cash receipts postings in fiscal year 2021. And the response is monthly cash receipts posting by the treasurer's office have been timely, allowing for the cash reconciliation between the accountant and the treasurer. Any discrepancies can be resolved quickly. So that is on those two questions. And as far as the Government Accounting Standards Board questions, there are two of them, new statements that need to be adhered to, number 84. This has to do with eliminating agency funds. The town is aware of the new requirements and is taking the required steps to ensure that all new requirements will be implemented in a timely manner. And for Governmental Accounting Standards Board, number 87, which is related to leases, including operating leases, like leases on copiers and things like that. The town is aware of the new requirements and is taking the required steps to ensure that all new requirements will be implemented in a timely manner. So those have been taken care of. So as far as I'm concerned, that is the report, unless I see that Andrea and Sue both have their hands up. Sue, I don't know if you meant to keep your hand up or if this is a new hand raising, but Andrea.
I didn't mean to. I'm putting it down now, it's hurting.
Okay, thank you. And Andrea, I see your hand up, so I will go to you.
I'm so pleased, I finally found the icon. I'd been searching. Now I don't know how to get rid of it, so, you know, a while. When we didn't do in, in 2020, the reconciliation on taxes, and you said we're going forward in '21, do we have to do the previous year first before we can go on to '21?
I am probably not the best person to answer that, but Ross looks like he can contribute.
Well, it wasn't that they weren't reconciled, it's just they weren't done as soon as they should be.
Oh, all right.
Alan would have had to reconcile all of that to close its books, and that has happened.
Yes.
For '20.
Right. And it looks like FY '21 is on track, or should be.
Good. It's a thing yesterday, I got a little confused, not confused confused, but a little confused because the vocabulary he used is so different from the vocabulary we use to refer to things that, you know, I, I didn't make the connections as properly, perhaps, as I should have. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we will post yesterday's meeting, and that's all that I have, unless there's someone else on the audit or finance. Don, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to go through the list so we know what the problem was and would correct it at problems. Have we done anything to prevent it in the future so that it won't happen again?
I, I think it's just an ongoing thing, that it's, it's timely. And so as long as it just continues to happen, I think it's good.
Okay, so the problem statement that I see here was we didn't have a treasurer or collector. And so as long as we have a treasurer or collector, it seems as though we're okay. When we get that same problem of not having a treasurer or collector, are we going to go into the same problem? Is there a way to prevent it?
I guess the only way to prevent it is to have someone working interim in that position so that it is done. Otherwise, you know, it's just like if you don't balance your checkbook for a month, and then you don't do it the next month, then you're three months behind.
Yeah, I'm from, it was ISO 9000, is the corrective, which would put your down on paper. But the preventative is to make sure it doesn't.
Right. So it's just to have someone in, in interim. If we don't have a permanent person, to get someone in as an interim as soon as we can.
And on the GASB, the two statements, they talk about us being aware of it, but there's no details about the accounts for the leases or exactly what they are. Is there going to be anything different in the monthly reports that we're receiving to indicate that an account falls into one of these two GSB ones?
Well, it's my understanding that they're setting up those accounts. I think we'll have to see that it happens.
Are you moving the money from existing accounts into them? Or is it just a reporting kind of thing? That there's a note on an existing account number that would allocate money to a budget for this year?
I'm afraid I can't answer that question.
No, no, that's, we need to understand the impact on the budget if it's going to be there or if it's just a reporting piece, how are we going to record it and see it in monthly reports?
So, no. Anyone else? All right, well then, at this point, I would close the, adjourn the Audit Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Are we doing all of them at once? Can you? Okay. Motion to adjourn the Audit Committee and the Finance Committee.
That's how, that's what my motion was, I just didn't say it.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right.
I think we're on Zoom at present, so Dave, let's start with you.
Yes.
Geraldine, yes.
Don Hayes, yes.
Those on Zoom.
Andrea Wood, yes.
Sam Grant, yes.
Sulicio, yes.
The meeting is adjourned unanimously at 6:48.
Eight, yes.
So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
And we are going to move on to appointments of officials and personnel. So 3.1 is to appoint a member of the Board of Selectmen to the Capital Planning Committee. So. You know, one minute while I write notes.
And she has the most experience.
Is there a motion to appoint one of us to the Capital Planning? Do we want to discuss first? I'm willing to do it because I have done it. Have you been on Capital Planning?
Um. I was elected and placed on Capital Planning Committee and thrown paperwork and had one meeting, and that was it.
Oh, yeah, it'll be different this year.
I understand that, but I just want to be very clear that I was kind of thrown into it last year, and it really was not a fair representation, I think, of where we could have been as far as capital planning is concerned. There were several issues that should have been brought up from the year previous to that, well, after that particular meeting.
So, well, I guess the question, would you like to be on Capital Planning?
I'm, I'm okay with keeping the things that I am. You're more in the financial end of it right now, I'm more in the IT end of it. So I will move for Madam Chair to be on the Capital Planning Committee.
And I will second that. Oh, all those in favor?
Just Exnderian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So I will be the member for the Board of Selectmen on Capital Planning. So we're getting there, Chris. There will be a committee, don't worry.
This year.
We do need the at-larges. I don't know if John has. There are, I think, three at-large members, four, four at-large.
I'm one of them.
And you're one of them. And I think that the others were Steve Spofford was an at-large member, Mark Hussey.
Mark Hussey was the other one.
And there was one other person.
One other one that didn't show up.
Wasn't able to.
Right.
Right. So, and Steve was on Finance Committee, he wasn't on Capital Planning. So I believe we have, we're staffed from the committees that need to be now because we have FinCon, we have planning, we have Board of Selectmen, and then we have four at-large, you're one. So we need three more at-large, so that's John Barrett. Oh, really?
I got three.
Okay.
This would be the third year.
So we'll, we'll need to talk to John then to.
Does John, this is the moderator?
Yes.
Does he appoint them, or do we?
He appoints them. Well, he seeks volunteers, but he appoints them.
Should we post, post for?
Talk to John, I think, probably. So, yes, I think we should post.
Well, there should be a post employee.
Yeah. All right, so that's it for Capital Planning. Hopefully, we'll have a fully staffed by the end of September. That would be great. 3.2 is to, is there a motion to appoint Lorraine Farmer as the Council on Aging Kitchen Assistant effective April 31st?
August.
August 31st, sorry, with a six-month probationary period pending successful query check and a pre-employment physical.
So moved.
Any discussion? Like, everything was in the packets?
Everything was in the packets and.
And this position is paid in by full, in full by a grant, a formulary grant. So just wonderful. So, all right. All those in favor?
Just Exnderian, yes.
Oh, wait, did I second that? Did I second that?
You just did.
Okay. All right. All all those in favor?
Just Excedurianian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. So congratulations, Lorraine. She'll need to come in to get her paperwork completed.
And get.
Yes.
So. All right, moving on to meeting business. Was there? Okay. All right, moving on. Meeting business. The first thing is emergency brand broadband benefit program. This came in on a. You know, a mailing to the town saying this was available. And it's something that people could sign up for. It's COVID related to get. Internet access at home, but it's very much an individual thing. The customers would need to contact Comcast Xfinity. So if you want me to, I could post this on the website.
Yes, I believe.
Under the COVID page, now that I know how to update that.
My suggestion would be, is there any way that we could have like a a bulletin board for all of these types of things with? Because we're going to have a fuel assistance popping in there as well.
I I did put fuel assistance in there.
Right, but I'm saying, is there a way we can cluster them all together? You know, have one section that is, you know, COVID relief funding and then have all of these together.
The only way I can do it is to group it. The way I did group mortgage assistance and. Mortgage assistance and the fuel assistance, the way I grouped that, I can add this to that and put a link.
Keep it all.
I can do that on the webpage.
For those that are interested in this, this is in regards to the pandemic. They're looking, if you meet financial qualifications for them, internet customers can apply to enroll in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. And it grants temporary monthly credits per household toward. Post-paid tier of internet service. So I think this would be. You know, for any customer who meets their financial qualifications, you'd be able to get a credit on your on your cable bill. So.
Okay, so I'll put a link on the website. Dave, I see you have something to say.
Yes, I can add to that. We've actually, there's about a 15-minute public service announcement that TCAM's been running. On Channel 9 about this program since maybe June. There's a lot more to it. There's a lot of detail to it. We can provide you with a copy of the video if you want to post that on the town's website.
If you could give me a link to the video. That would be.
Is it on the YouTube?
If it's on YouTube, maybe I can just grab it.
I will double check. I don't believe it's on YouTube.
Okay, it's just on the on Channel 9.
We can put it on YouTube. We can provide you with.
If you put it on YouTube and then you link it to the YouTube.
Yeah, that would be great, Dave. So let me know when you have that. I know I'll put something in and then I'll add that when you give me the link.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you. That was the only thing I have for that. So do we need a vote to do that? Or I have vote to place information on website. Can we just agree?
I don't think we need to vote.
You don't need to. It doesn't hurt.
Okay, I move to place the broadband benefits fund information for Comcast on the town's website.
Veronica Cal, second. All in favor?
Just Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right. 4.2. This has to do with recycling personnel. Are we going to do this here or do we want to do it under?
I was going to do it as part of my update, but you can certainly do it here as an agenda item.
Do you want to move it down to the town administrator update? Yes.
Yeah. Want to do that.
Okay, all right, let's leave that down. All right, the decorum policy. If you are not participating in the meeting, it would be great if you could mute yourself, please. Thank you. Looking for the next piece of this. All right, the decorum policy for the second reading. This is something that we had looked at towards the end of June, beginning of July. We did a first reading then, so we were going to do a second reading today. I have first reading June 21st.
Yeah.
Okay.
I also just want to say that I formatted this to the policy format just to keep them all together.
Okay.
And then we would need to figure out whatever the policy number is. For that, which I didn't know what, how that rolls.
It it goes by. Yeah, we'll have to look at that.
That's what I mean. I didn't know what that was.
Okay.
But that can be filled in when we approve, when and if we approve it.
All right.
So the purpose of the this policy. Is the Board of Selectmen and interim town administrator agree to establish a consistent process for all municipal boards, commissions and committees. The policy is meeting decorum in order for all boards, commissions, authorities and committees. The presiding officer shall preserve decorum and decide all questions of order and procedure subject to appeal to the board. During board meetings, municipal officers shall preserve order and decorum and shall neither by conversation. Conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings nor refuse to obey the order of the preceding officer or the rules of the board. Every board member. Desiring to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the presiding officer. Shall confine comments to the questions under the debate and shall avoid all personalities and inflammatory language. A board member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. Unless a point of order is raised by another member or unless the speaker chooses to yield to questions from another member. If a board member is called to order while speaking, the board member. Shall cease speaking immediately until the question of order is determined. If ruled to be in order, the speaker shall be permitted to proceed. If ruled to not be in order, the speaker shall remain silent or shall alter remarks as to comply with rules of the board. All members of the board shall accord the utmost courtesy with each other so the town, to the town. The speaker shall remain silent or shall alter remarks as to comply with rules of the board. All members of the board shall accord the utmost courtesy with each other to town employees and to the public appearing before the board. And shall refrain at all times from rude and derogatory remarks, reflections or abusive comments. Board members shall confine questions as to the particular matters before the assembly and in debate shall confine remarks to the issues before the board. Members shall be removed. From the meeting for failure to comply with decisions of the presiding officer or for continued violations of the rules of the board. If the presiding officer fails to act, any member may move to require the enforcement of the rules and the affirmative vote of a majority of the board. Shall require the presiding officer to act. Members of the administrative staff and employees of the town shall observe the same rules of procedure and decorum applicable. Yeah, to members of the board. While the presiding officer shall have the authority to preserve decorum in meetings as far as staff members and town employees are into. Town employees are concerned, the town administrator shall also shall be responsible for the orderly conduct and decorum of all town employees. Any staff member or employees desiring to address the board shall be recognized by the chair. Shall state name and address for the record and shall limit remarks to the matter under discussion. All remarks and questions addressed to the board shall be addressed to the board as a whole and not to any other member thereof. No staff member other than the person with the with the floor shall enter into any discussion either directly or indirectly. Without the permission of the presiding officer. Public members attending board meetings shall also shall observe the same rules of proprietary decorum and good conduct. Applicable to the members of the board. Any person making personal impertinent and slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board. Or those attending the board meetings shall be removed from the room if so directed by the presiding officer. If this presiding officer should fail to act, any member of the board shall move to require the chair to act to enforce the rules. And the affirmative vote of the majority of the board shall require the presiding officer to act. Any public member desiring to address the board shall be recognized by the chair. Shall state name and address for the record and shall limit remarks to the question under discussion. All remarks and questions addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the board or the board of municipal officers through the chair. And not to any municipal town employee. No person other than members of the board and the person having the floor shall enter any discussion either directly or through a member of the board. Without the permission of the presiding officer.
So there you have it. So I see a question. Geraldine?
I'm curious, does every committee have a. Running officer or how does that work?
That would be the chair, whoever the presiding.
Whoever the chair is.
Right, if you were like a vice chair running the meeting, then you would be the presiding officer for that meeting.
Thank you. Oh, Chris, go ahead.
Is this something new because? I've never had a problem with my board controlling it that I needed someone to write rules to tell me how to run a board. Come on, guys, seriously?
Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, a comment and I'm advocating either for or against, but. Does that kind of set of rules consider electronic communication? You can't have the TA escort a video of a person out the door if they're not cooperating.
But they can be.
Muted.
They can be muted and their radio turned off. They can be uninvited to our Zoom conference, right?
Right, but that wouldn't be our call. We would have to have probably the presiding officer order that to happen.
Yeah. I mean, it it's. You know, it seems that it would be understood that this is the way it works. But it it also seems that it isn't understood that this is the way it works. So therefore, that's the purpose of the policy. It might be good to have it stated. Chad. Chris.
Who doesn't understand that? Which board doesn't understand that?
It's, this is a, this is just a policy that if something comes up, then we have a policy that that states what the rule is. It does, it's not directed towards any.
I personally, as as a chair, if someone was given, anyone on my board. Hard time, they would be asked to leave or they would be escorted out by the police department. I don't need. Rules to tell me how to do that. That's only common sense.
One would think.
You know, I I don't understand why you wasted all that time writing that up because everybody already knows what to do. We're all elected officials. We get it.
But they don't follow it.
Who doesn't?
Like, it doesn't matter who. I'm just saying, I have been.
I've been on a couple of boards and I've never seen it happen before.
Can we move the the vote?
Ross, did you have a comment before we go?
Only that I've seen in other towns, since I'm new here.
Yeah.
Depending upon who the members are, some people are, have no common sense. And you need some basis to say, these are the rules we had before you got here, these are the rules we have now. And we're going to apply them. And it makes it seem less arbitrary. If the chair has to take the extreme of having someone escorted out. It's not reacting now. It's because there was an existing policy that. It's going to happen. And it's for the people who don't have common sense. And unfortunately, I've seen that occur. Not here yet, but.
Very nice little guy.
So is there a motion to accept the decorum policy?
I move that we accept the meeting decorum in order for all boards, commissions, authorities and committees.
And I will second that motion. I think we've already had our discussion.
Madam Chair?
Oh, Andrea, I didn't see your your hand raised. Sorry, go ahead.
That's quite all right. It's been my understanding over time. That the policies as the Board of Selectmen make only apply to the employees and departments that come under them. Not elected officials, not the Finance Committee. So you. In in the collective terms that you used included us in there. I have nothing against this policy. But I wondered to make it applicable with those who did not apply, would they have to adopt this policy? Separately and put it in their old rules and regulations to have it work?
I think that the answer to that question is yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Just Excedurianian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the. Signboard policy.
On this, I did again placed it in the format for the. Policies and procedures. Thank you.
I have one question. Should we read it and then I'll ask my questions?
That'd be your decision. How are you going to do it?
It, the policy itself is okay. It was for the form. And I thought there was a difference between the form that. Which form do you have there? Okay, so we're good. I would just change select board to select men. Because that's the way we do it now. Select board, we adopt in our new charter. And I didn't, and I don't think we have a an email address that is selectboard@townson.com. I think it's selectmen.
You, is that, you you got the, you did this for me?
I just assumed it was select board and.
In most towns it is, but in Townsend it is not yet.
Yeah.
But as soon as the charter is accepted, then it will be. So, so that's where we have it. So we're going to go forward with reading the policy first and we'll take further discussion.
Yeah. So again, the policy number would fall in line with whatever the next one would be.
Okay.
I mean, it does not replace any other policy. Purpose, the Board of Selectmen and interim town administrator agree to establish a consistent policy regarding the electronic signboard. Policy is signboard usage policy, electronic trailer mounted sign. The following is policy as directed by both the interim town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. Signboard is for official town business only, not for private, corporate or religious functions. Town business includes but is not limited to traffic routing and road business closures. Elections, town meetings, public hearing notices, water bans, welcome home to military personnel. Townwide events, fundraising events related to town functions such as library or council on aging and health-related information. Precedent will be given to emergencies as determined by public safety officials. This could mean interrupting a previously approved signposting. Note, public safety officials do not need approval to post messages related to any emergency. Requests for positions should be submitted at least two weeks prior to event, except in cases of emergency. Using the attached form, sign request should be approved by the select board chair. The town further agrees to loan the sign to the highway department, highway superintendent's discretion to other communities for use during an emergency.
All right, so is there a motion to accept this policy as written?
So I move that we approve the signboard usage policy as discussed.
I will second that motion. Is there any further conversation about this? I thought I saw a hand raised. Okay, I don't see it now. All right, all all those in favor?
Just Excedurianian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right. The next one is to approve the postings for vacancies for outreach coordinator. Program coordinator and recycling center. Maybe we're going to move recycling. Program coordinator and recycling center. Maybe we're going to move recycling center down to the administrator's report. Okay, so these vacancies were posted last week. That's because of the resignation of Katie Petrasi, who's. Last day is this week. So instead of hiring an assistant director. With a part-time program coordinator, we're a, a full-time outreach coordinator and a point-six time program coordinator. Is being hired and our. Mission here is just to approve those.
Approve the posting. So I move that we approve the posting for the Council on Aging's. Employment opportunity program coordinator and employment opportunity for outreach coordinator.
I will second that. Any discussions? All right, all those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, four point six, the planning board mandatory referral for five turnpike road parking spaces. This is a mandatory referral. If this is where the planning board is requesting. Comments?
I read the, the referral notice and I looked at the application and. I guess I'm confused. I don't know if you look at it, there's. There's a discrepancy in regards to the amount of area in which they're paving. That's in. The referral notice is different than what is in the application. In the application, it, it appears to me that there's only five, five parking spaces that they're adding. But if you look at the actual application, looks like. There is existing 117 and an additional 58 parking spaces are being added, so I'm not really sure.
I have the same issue. I guess for me, for comments, I would want them to confirm exactly how many parking spots are being added. If we are essentially one and a half timing, timing the parking area, the. Impervious area. Then I think they're requesting a waiver from stormwater regulations. I would, because. Part of that abuts the river. I would want that to be reconsidered. Depending on where the. The additional 58 spots are. If it's five spots or six spots, it says greater than five. Then I, I feel differently. The other thing is that a waiver is being requested for parking lot plantings. To not have to put in parking lot plantings. And I, I would want further consideration given to that. Because parking, it would be nice to have. That's all.
Okay, so have you, you want me to?
Comment? If you agree with me, I mean, I.
Well, no, those are exactly my comments. I'm concerned about if there is. From, from the application, if there's that many additional parking spaces, I have concern about waiving the wastewater management plan. I think that's important. Especially because they are close to water. I would think that conservation would be able to pick that up as well, I'm sure. That works, but. Those are the concerns that, that I have. That possible wastewater issue. Confirming exact amount of parking spaces and the parking lot plantings. Waiving the parking lot plantings.
So we need a way to work that. Comments, please clarify. The number of spot, parking spots that matter. If it's, if it's greater. If it's 58. If it's 58, in other words, if it's a 50.
Did you see the application for this?
If it's a 50% increase, given that the. The parking lot, especially that far back one, that's the river. I would want consideration given to stormwater management. So in other words, if they're going from 117 to 175. Given that it abuts the river, I would want. Please consider stormwater management. And then. I don't want that. The argument is there aren't a lot of plantings there anyway, and there aren't. But it might make it look a little nicer.
Well, I, I don't want to tell the board what to do. I'm just saying, this is our comment, that they should reconsider the plantings. Or waiving the planting. But it's the board's ultimate decision of what it is. They're just asking for our comments.
Right, okay. So there we have it. So that needs to be written up and sent back. Do we need to vote on them? Not really.
We need to vote on that?
A mandatory refer. I guess votes are always good then.
I could write it up and then put it in SharePoint and then.
Well, I mean, I think you've articulated very clearly, you said. Both to pass on the select board's recommendations as follows.
I, I move that we pass on the selectmen's recommendations as discussed.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
Veronica Kelly.
I'll put something in SharePoint and then you can. Your two cents worth.
That's good. All right, four point seven. Vote for Ross to sign for the unital rebates for green communities grant projects through RISE.
Is that?
That is that. Nine of them.
Yes, I saw nine of them.
Yes, there are nine of them. And they're the, the green communities grants, the ones to have rebates.
Right.
And RISE is putting in for those, so.
I just have some questions on one page, but I go for that one here. It's offline.
Okay.
Okay, and, and procedurally, it's okay for us to. Grant for all nine of those instead of going each individual because it's for each building that we have, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I move to allow the interim town administrator to sign for you. Unitil rebates for green communities grant projects through RISE.
I second that. All those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, and four point eight is to vote to ratify the memorandum of understanding with IAFF. Voted on November 17th, 2020. This had never been formally signed. And so the firefighters union asked us to sign it and has already been voted. So we just need to ratify it and they changed the selectman names from Wayne and on. To the, the board as it exists now.
So they're okay with having the board as it exists now?
Yes. That, that was okay through our council and their council.
Okay.
So.
I move to vote to ratify the, or approve. To ratify the MOU with IAFF. That was voted on November 17th, 2020 per agreement.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
Want to sign it now?
Let's sign it now, then it's done. And.
You gave me the copies for safekeeping, I actually found them.
And I have already signed, so it is just here. Do we need to have them notarized? I see that there's a notarized. I never notarized these before.
I'm sure we did notarize.
Yeah, maybe, okay. And I believe there were two copies. So a second copy? And I believe one is for us to keep and one is to send back to them. I would give them to Ross. Or put in the appropriate price.
Well, I'll take it to Ross.
Okay. And do we, do we need Joe?
Two, two is enough.
Two is enough, okay. But Joe isn't back until next week. He might be around this weekend, I'm not sure. Right, so that takes care of seniority. All right, moving on to the town administrative updates.
The past practice, including this year, is the town has credited the highway department employees with an annual vacation allotment. On the first day of each fiscal year. You know, the contract talks about it being credited throughout the year. But they've been. And I verified this with the treasurer's office, they've been credited their vacation on, on the first of the year. So the union asked us to sign MOU essentially saying that we're going to do that again for this year. And this year only. It will be subject to negotiations on what we do going forward. So we're not changing. Actual practice. And we're not tying our hands for the future. I worked out, actually, the union proposed MOU that I sent back a few times and I put in stipulation. That if employee uses their credited vacation before it would have been approved. And then should leave employment. Any deficit of overused vacation is taken out of their last pay. So. It minimizes the chance of somebody getting two weeks vacation allocated on July 1, taking two weeks vacation and then. Not working, even though they haven't allocated, so we take that out of their last pay. Union is okay with that.
Okay.
That's okay with you, then I would sign that MOU. Move that on.
I am good with that. Do we need a vote? Yes, okay.
I move that we instruct the town administrator to sign the MOU in regards to the. The meaning is that the highway department?
Ask me, it's highway.
Ask me highway.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes.
So a little bit of unsettling news. Jared, the town's treasurer collector has accepted, right, the reef and obviously he does, it's a fantastic job for him in another town. And as much as I tried to offer him. What we could do to make him stay here. It's not in our capabilities to do that. I think it's a great opportunity for him. I think it's great that his talent is being recognized and. I wish him the best for that. His last day, it's going to be September 24th, and he will be greatly missed. So in the meantime, I have a job posting prepared. I listed the salary range as starting at the starting point. Step one is grade F, going up to a little bit over step nine, which is a little bit over midpoint. I checked how this compares with the Collins Center report. And it's a little bit below the average minimum salary as determined by the Collins Center.
The whole range is below?
The, the top of the range that I'm suggesting, we post this is from 64,000 to 75,000.
Right.
That 75,000 is below the average minimum as opposed by Collins Center. That could be a limiting factor for us. But I also feel it's best practices to start someone. In the lower half of a range versus at the top of a range. Because their growth is sort of capped to whatever the grid might change each year. So I'm proposing that we post it at that rate. And I think I gave you a copy. I marked up sort of in red what was different between. The past posting and the current one. I put in there that we want someone to have municipal experience. We want someone that had been a treasurer collector in Massachusetts is preferred. If this was an assistant treasurer collector, I'd be happy to have somebody with strong financial skills, but as the treasurer collector, we need someone who has done it before. And I'm posting a range of 64,000, 440 up to 75,000. Suggesting that we close the. Application period. Fourth week of September, and I've also added that we might consider an interim opportunity if someone were to apply.
Okay.
And that's in there, right?
Yes.
Um. All right, the only comment I have, Ross, is I would want to keep everybody on cones, even though this is not a. This is a contract position. It's not a union position. So I would make that. Maybe the next step up, you can, you know, to, if 75, it's above the step nine, was it? Then I would make it go.
Make it a step 10.
Make it step 10 perfectly on that step. So that we have, we're trying to keep everybody.
Everybody needs to be on.
On the cones somewhere. Is, is what we've been trying to do. Or that was what I understood the idea to be, so.
Well, that's fine. I, I think the 75 I suggested is the top is a little bit low in the market space. So going up a little bit is better.
Yeah.
It still leaves five steps.
To go.
For someone to grow and mature into.
Right. So, okay.
So I'd like your permission to post this. As I was reading through the personnel policy, I noticed that actually it's the town administrator that normally is authorized to submit these job postings. So going forward, are you okay with the town administrator doing postings? Agree, authorizing postings versus the board posting them?
I would want to know, I mean, I don't have to authorize, but I would want to know what the posting says. For things like the salary, to those sorts of reasons, so, yeah.
It, it, it expedites the posting process versus waiting potentially two weeks for a meeting.
Three weeks, yeah.
Three weeks. It still leaves the select board involved in the hiring decision. That's where the appointments come from, is from, from your board. I'm just asking for permission to go ahead and post these things as they come up. And what I'm hearing is just to run the salaries by you.
Yeah, that's, I agree with that. That way too, the postings for COA could have gone out.
Yeah, they could have gone already instead of having to go through the process.
Right, so in any event, yes. So do we need a motion?
Do you want two motions? One motion to allow the town, I move to allow the town administrator to. Post when necessary upon notifying the board of selectmen.
Yes, second.
And I can notify you individually, I'll need.
Yes, correct. Hosts when necessary. All those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
And I move that the interim town administrator post for the treasurer's position.
Treasurer collect.
Treasurer collector's position.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Just six in Durianian, yes.
Veronica Kelly.
I just want to say that Jared has done a lot of work for us, a lot of work. He is going to be very sorely impressed. Very rare that you get an individual that you ask a question, no problem, yeah, I can take care of that and it's done. I wish him luck in his. Position. I'm sad to see him go.
I know, I agree.
The recycling center, through the Board of Health, approached the board a couple days ago and asked about. The recycling center, through Board of Health, approached the board a couple days ago and asked about a pay scale for a landfill attendant, a landfill attendant who have a hoisting license. So this is a step above other landfill employees. And they'd like to start this person at a grade B, step ten, which equates to seventeen dollars and ten cents per hour. I initially asked me that you hold off on this decision, because I wanted to take a look and see how that number fit into other grades and other positions similar. And I think it, I think it fits, I think it recognizes that this person is being asked to have a hoisting license, so he can run the loader. I think it's appropriate number. So if you're okay, then we, I would ask them to go ahead and post the job at that rate. In the seventeen-ten, because it comes off the Collins grid.
Right.
Madam Chairman?
Uh, Andrea, yes.
Is this person's salary still going to come from the revolving fund?
The answer to that is yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We had asked them to look at that. To, uh, that, that was one of the questions that we had. For them, so.
And, and apparently, they, they, they're comfortable, they can fund it out of that revolving fund at this number.
Um. I, I do think that in the future, and I know that at, at one point, there was a DPW report done. It's been a couple of years now, I think. I think we wanna look at that, and I wanna, I think we wanna look at the, how things fall out with everything on that. I don't know, just a whole, when we're doing personnel, looking at everything. Administrative assistance, the recycling center, is the board of health the right place for that? Those sorts of questions.
Say that again, please?
Is the board of health the right place for the recycling center to fall under?
Yes.
So this is, I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just throwing out the question as something that we might wanna consider in the future.
Yeah, I, I think that's a bigger question than this question I'm posting for.
I agree.
A landfill attendant.
I, I, and I, you know, I, I had said this before. I am, you know, I, I have concerns about adding positions when I, I feel that we do have people already on the payroll that can do the functions that is being asked on this particular position. I think we also have people on staff that would be able to do some of the functions that are there, too. Which goes along with our conversation about, you know, what else we, you know, the, the future discussions that we wanna talk about, you know, where, where all of this lies. I'm not really sure if this adding additional staff right now is, is the smart thing to do.
Well, I think it's, it's a replacement of someone on the left, so it's not a new total position. It's a class, it's a new, probably a new classification recognizing that we need somebody with a hoisting license.
Right, but, but again, I think we have people on staff that would be able to do that.
In other departments.
In other departments.
May I answer that question?
It wasn't a question.
Well, it is, because.
Well, just a minute, Chris.
Okay, go ahead, and I will try to explain to you why you can't do that, but go ahead.
Let, let, um, let Chess finish his thought, and then we record now.
There are, um, there are other options available, I'm thinking. Kind of resolve other issues, not only, you know, the manpower issue, but it seems that this is not the first time that there's a staffing issue in the recycling. And I believe that you need to take a look at the bigger picture as opposed to just one department. That's where I'm, I'm coming from.
Okay, so I just have to ask them, is this, like Ross said, this is something that we should post for the short term? And then look at all the options for the long term?
I believe they have an immediate need to get this position filled or replaced. And that we ought to post the position, and then if there's a bigger sorting, if you're thinking of taking someone from the cemetery, crew of the cemetery laborer, they're at twenty hours a week already, so if they were to slide over and do the work of the landfill, then they'd get bumped up to benefits, so better off with a separate crew in the cemetery and a separate person in the landfill. They're only looking at fourteen hours a week for this position, so this is not a huge position.
A month, yeah, I thought it was just the two days that it's open. Yeah, it's two seven-hour days, right?
Well, I think it's per pay period, but either way, it's not a lot of hours.
No.
It's per pay period?
Yeah.
Okay, so Chris.
Yeah, it's, you get paid every two weeks.
One day per pay period or two days? And so total hours per pay period?
Fourteen.
Fourteen per pay period?
Yes, you get paid every two weeks. And it's only two days.
So then it's seven hours per pay period?
Seven hours a week. It's only seven hours a week, yeah.
Oh, it's seven hours a week? So they work the day that it's open, and then they work the following week as well, when it's not open?
Following, two weeks. It's open every other week.
It's a, it's open every other week. So that tells me that it's seven hours.
It's only fifteen, it's fifteen hours a month. I'm getting that from my administrator.
Maybe it's fifteen hours a month, and they don't work every weekend, so.
No, they don't work every weekend. They only work twice a month. But the key is to get somebody in there with a hoisting license.
Okay, I just wanna, I just need to know, how many hours per pay period?
Fifteen hours a month, that's it.
And so that's seven hours, seven point five per pay period?
Okay.
Okay. That's different than what Ross was saying.
I'm getting that from my administrator, so she would know about it.
Yes.
So, so it's seven and a half hours per pay period? Get that from your administrator.
She's on.
Is she on here? Where is she? I don't know if she can, oh, she has her hand raised. Carla, could you tell me how many hours per pay period? Hello, Carla. She may not have talking capability.
They are talking to you, can you hear them?
I'm trying, here I am.
Ah, there you are, okay. So what is the, how many hours per pay period? Not per month, but per pay period?
We have, we have two employees that work seven and a half hours a month.
No.
What?
No, not a month.
A, a pay period, so you, you have two employees, and they work seven and a half hours. So it's fifteen hours a pay period. I think that's what you're looking for.
I'm looking for per person, per person, per pay period. How many hours?
Each person works, each person works seven and a half hours twice a month, so that is fifteen hours a month.
So seven and a half hours per pay period, roughly?
Yeah.
Is that a yes?
Correct. That is a yes.
Alright, and you are hiring a single hoisting operator, not two?
Oh, I sure hope it's only gonna be one. We can.
So a single hoisting operator, okay, alright. Alright, thank you, Carla. That was the question.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead, Chris, yeah.
Chess, the reason why we can't do that is this is a revolving fund that's funded strictly by the amount of recyclables we bring in and sell.
The previous year.
It's the money we have. We, we can't just make up money. The market changes, everything changes. What I'm trying to explain is what you're talking about is bringing in one of the employees from the other thing. That becomes overtime for them. You're taking way too much money out of my revolving account by trying to hire a, a union operator or a union laborer with a book to run this machine that's gonna take way too much money out of my account. Because I'm gonna end up having to pay them a scale that is way over seventeen dollars an hour.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, it is.
I think there's thirteen fifty.
That's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm talking about taking recycling and put it under a different department.
No, you're not. That's an elected board. We own it, we are not giving it up. You can't take it from us.
Okay.
You can't, and you're not going to. It belongs to the board of health.
That's a different discussion.
No, it's not. It's not a different discussion.
Well, it is.
No, it's not, because it belongs to the board of health. The board of health is an elected board, and they own it, we are not giving it up. The only way you can get it from us is if we decide we don't want it. We are not going to do that.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Alright, so what we're looking at here is whether or not to hire an employee.
To replace someone on the left, so it's not an added headcount. But to adjust the pay, because they need somebody with a hoisting license over a non-hoisting license. So it's coming off the Collins grid, a grade B, suggested step ten, which is seventeen-ten. And as I said, my, my concern, the reason I held it up three weeks ago, was just to be sure it fit with other people that were in that grade and, and time, and it, I think it's an appropriate way for that position considering qualifications.
Good question. Go ahead, Jen.
How often does a hoisting license have to renew?
I think a year.
Every year?
I think it's a year, I'm not, I'm not.
And who pays for their hoisting license?
They do.
They do. And I think it's fairly expensive, correct?
My.
I don't, no, I don't have one.
I think it is. So. I don't know how you don't need that back and forth between the classes, I really.
Okay, so I guess at this point, what I'm looking for is a motion to post for the replacement attendant at the landfill that has a hoisting license. Is there a motion?
Um, I move that we post for job posting for the recycling center for someone with a hoisting license in the step that we talked about.
Grade B, step ten.
Alright, I, I will second that. And, uh, all those in favor?
Jess, six and Duranian, no.
Veronica Kelly, yes. So the notice happens.
Does, well, it doesn't carry.
It doesn't carry, right.
So you'll have to redo it again when Joe's here.
Okay.
Well, as far as the posting goes, who's paying for that? That coming out of the revolving account, or is it coming out of?
What posting?
The posting for this job. Well, the posting isn't happening yet.
Yeah.
But, um, I would suggest, since the board of health owns the recycling center, the board of health pays for it. Okay, so we will post it, that's us. Well, once you get permission from the select board to post it, but you'll pay for it, you'll pay for yourself when, when they go. Just make a joke. Um, the last thing I've got is, we talked about the audit tonight. Our current auditor, Melanson, has submitted a contract to cover their services for the next audit, which will be FY twenty-one audit. Um, I've looked through their scope of services, it seems to be appropriate. The, they're asking for a fee of twenty-eight thousand five hundred, which is exactly the same that they charged the town last year. Unfortunately, it's exactly the same that was put in the budget for this year.
And it is consistent with the agreement that we had with them, which is somewhere in this pile of papers.
Well, I have their proposed agreement, I mean, for next year, the next audit.
For, yeah, this is, um, the, I don't know, you might have that as well? Yeah, so it was for three years, and it was twenty-eight-five each year, so yes, it's consistent. So I, um, do we have a motion for Ross to sign that?
I don't know what I'm voting, what I'm motioning.
Um, you are motioning for Ross to sign the contract for Melanson Heath to perform the auditing services for FY twenty-one?
So I'm. See how I did that?
Yeah, sorry, well done.
And I will second. All those in favor?
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. Okay, so this is from Melanson Heath.
And sometime in the fall or whenever we need to start the process for another three years.
And that's the audit committee that works on that, so we'll, we'll get that rolling here towards the end of September, October. So if you know people, other auditors, Ross, that would be great.
And that's all I have to report for this week, actually.
Okay, thank you very much. Reports from board liaisons, that's pretty much where we are. I am general government, so I'll go first. Um, I wanna first thank Katie Petrosi for all the good work she's done over the years at the senior center. She will be missed. She's going to air as their senior center director. So I'm sure she'll do a wonderful job there, so. And that was the reason for the two postings that we had earlier. Instead of, we had approved an assistant director for this coming fiscal year for the senior center. Karen prefers to hire the full-time outreach coordinator and the point-six program coordinator to get people used to the senior center, to get that staff going. I asked her to draw up her org chart and to include the executive assistant director in there, so there it is. That's why that big box is there right above the two. Because one of those will become, either the program director or the outreach coordinator will, eventually that position will be assistant director slash program coordinator, or assistant director slash outreach coordinator. I just didn't want the assistant director position to be lost.
Right.
Since we aren't hiring it immediately. So anyway, in the packet is the organization that is going forward, and it will be adjusted over time. So, uh, that's that. Um, I attended the council and aging meeting last week, and I guess the only, I sent Karen questions because I also updated the website after the meeting. And there is a question as far as terms go, so we could see some appointments in September. Because we have people running out in twenty-twenty-one that we had appointed maybe in January to run out in twenty-twenty-one, and we did not reappoint them in June.
Yeah.
Because we never got that, but we did reappoint one person for just one year, and it should have been three years. So there's some adjustments to be done there. So that's that. Uh, for conservation, Japanese knotweed removal. This is something that we had talked about over the summer, because we have knotweed on the Jeff Street parking lot that needs to be removed, and there's some at the senior center. And on the rail trail. Our insurance does not cover, the same way Grotton's does, for the licensed person to remove under our town insurance. So the rail trail will have to come up with another way, but we still have knotweed on town property. So, um, Joan Wachawitz and her husband have come forward and said, what would we think about them tackling the patch near the senior center? Uh, she said, I've been reading about a technique being used by Westfield River Wild and Senate volunteers that does not involve chemicals. Instead, they cut it down about three times a year for several years. Instead, they cut it down about three times a year for several years until the rhizomes finally fail. That can't be used on the rail trail because they have to do it more immediately.
Right.
But it might be worth an experiment if we're willing to let them do that. What I don't know, and this is a question I have, I guess, is what do you do with what you cut down? It's invasive.
Burn it?
I, I don't know. I didn't think it was a good thing to burn it. But I, I don't know. So I'll ask that question. But what do you think? Do you think that's worth going forward and trying? In that little patch next to the Senior Center before it becomes a big patch?
And what about liability? Do we need to be concerned about anything with that?
We have volunteers doing that.
Yeah.
I think that they've been adequately trained to do what they're doing, using the tools they're using, using clippers and shovel. I don't have any issue.
They said if they get it started, they may be able to hand it off to landscapers who can just know it every time they do the lawn.
Yeah.
And then it would discourage it from growing. So what do you think?
If that's, if, I mean, the volunteers are willing to tackle it, and you don't have any liability issues, I say go for it.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I mean, how big is this patch, Jen? I, I'm trying to picture where it is.
It's off to the left side beyond where the addition is.
So to get rid of it, could, could it be a control burn and just burn it out?
I think it's too close to the building.
I mean, it was a control burn with.
For some reason, and I'm not sure why, I don't think burning it is a good idea.
Well, and, and the proposal sounds like they've done some research on what's worked elsewhere, and they seem to have a, a good plan on how to move it. It doesn't risk burning the Senior Center down.
Especially after we're just adding a piece onto it, yeah.
Well, she wasn't sure who to ask permission from. Is it the select board, the town facilities manager, Karen Stacy? I mean.
I think they just asked the select board, and they should let Stacy know when they're down there and coordinate.
Okay. All right, so do we need a vote?
Or Karen.
Karen, yes. Well, both of them really, so. Now check on that control burn. It's a, it's a good thought, but I, I don't know why. I think it's not good, but.
My, my understanding is it's a rhizome. It's like a potato in the, in the ground.
Oh.
So if you, if you just burn the top, it's still, yeah, yeah, and it'll, it'll.
It'll keep going.
Keep going, yeah.
So you have to, until it, it's, it just won't do it anymore.
If you keep on cutting the top, it's not getting the energy to get, to get bigger, so it, it'll just die. And I think they're kind of choking it out, and that's what they're trying to do.
Yeah.
Probably creating smoke will find somebody who doesn't think that's a good idea.
Right.
All right. So do we have a motion?
Oh, I move that we ask Joan and her husband to help us with the Japanese knotweed at the library.
So maybe you vote to allow them to continue their proposal to move the knotweed.
Okay.
Versus we're not working towards it as well.
Right, okay.
Allowed to continue with the proposal to control the knotweed. All right, and I will second that. All those in favor?
Chastex and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, and then Capital Strategies Solutions, they're well underway. They are examining the expenses this week to make sure there were things that were reported that weren't in the town report and things that were in the town finances that were not reported that are COVID. So Lee and Dick and Terry are working to get all that resolved this week. The invoices that were identified by Jennifer needs to be done by the end of the week because there is a submission due.
All three of them are working very, very hard, probably harder than they realize they're gonna have to to help Capital Strategies get this information.
Right.
Because they have to do it rather quickly too, right?
Well, and it's more expedient for Terry and Lee and Dick to go find the information in the files versus
Jennifer.
Jennifer, but still a lot of work to figure out what they're, on top of their regular duties.
And there are things that were entered that were reclassified one way or the other, except Terry's having to look not only in the bios but in accounting. So pull things out. So, but they're getting there, so it's all, all good. A lot of work, that's.
Yep.
Thank you to that. And I did have on the website, this is something to think about. The Collins Center Report changed job titles on some jobs. Administrative assistance was changed to department assistant. We need to determine whether we are going to go through the website and change all the job titles to match the Collins Center Report. So this is something to think about. I've been doing a lot of work on the website this week. So we can now edit the COVID nineteen tabs as of this morning. COVID nineteen, the schools tab, and the town projects tab, which we weren't able to do. So if you take a look at that, Civic Plus made the change that they needed to make. So that's set. If you have anything that you want to put in there, let me know, and admins can edit it. And Carolyn, Kathy, and I are the admins for the site.
And if you change the job descriptions in the web, does that mean by the job description, change the job titles, do we have job descriptions that match the new titles?
The job descriptions that were put out match the names, if I remember correctly, match the names in the Collins Center.
Okay.
So I'm just looking for consistency over time, but look at it and make sure, because it should all match. And we have to decide whether we're going with the old ones or whether we're adopting. So in other words, there, instead of being administrative assistant for conservation, it's department assistant for conservation. Department assistant for, word of health, department assistant for highway. But we can keep it the other way. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, just consistency.
I'm okay with change, as long as it's consistent.
And I want to keep them to the balance, so.
Okay, so let's look at that, and I'm not going to make any changes.
Is this given by the union or is this not a union issue?
Well, it is a union issue because a lot of these are union jobs.
Right.
So we have to look at that as well. So it's something that might be for the next fiscal year, until we get this settled. So as opposed to changes, I don't know. It, it's something to keep in mind, that's all. That's all I have.
For elected boards, planning board, they're doing some work, continued good work with the master plan committee. They're in final versions of the master plan. They are getting feedback, not only from the planning board, but from other experts, I guess, in the field. That looks like that's been going pretty well, which is a good thing. I did want to mention the highway department had sent me a memo that was a, they're looking for a rate increase for plow contractors. And I'd like to see if we can put that on a future agenda to discuss that.
September?
September's okay. And again, I'm being questioned in regards to the Greenville Street Bridge project. So I'd like to be able to address that sooner rather than later. How are we gonna take care of that?
Ross, are you up to speed on that? The Greenville Road Bridge? So that might be something, Chad, that you want to talk to Ross about.
Add it to the list of things. I will be meeting with the recreation department. Their next meeting is on September second with the full board. That, I'm looking forward to that. They're gonna be debriefing their summer and going over everything that they've done. I also want to thank Madam Chair for helping them out with their webpage. I'm sure that they're very happy with seeing the changes on there.
It's getting there.
It's getting there, but I'm sure that that is, and they are looking for space for the summer two thousand twenty two. But I want to, I want to help them get, get something a little more, that, that's a little more accommodating than what they had this year. I think that's something that, you know, we can at least plan through the winter time to be able to, to make sure that they're all ready to go for, for next summer. I also want to report on the water department. They are moving forward with the class action suit in regard to PFAS PFOS. They are, the attorney that, that was hired is basically giving monthly reports on where they stand. Nothing really to report in that, but just that they're reporting. There was a report for the Main Street well, which I passed out to everybody. That came back really, with a really good report. The Main Street well was a project that they, they've been working on with high hopes, and they're, they're achieving all of what they wanted for that. And I'm looking forward for them to, to, the next step is to bring that online, and that's going to help all the water quality for, for everybody in town, which I think is a good thing. And the next water meeting is going to be in September. It's going to be joint, a joint meeting, and they're asking for the Board of Health, the zoning board, the planning board. They want to talk about planning for the future in regards to what we had talked about when we had our PFAS regulations and what they're looking at to move forward so that all boards have the same information and everybody is, is kind of working together for the same type of plan. The water department wants to explain what they're doing and how the other boards can help them out, which I think is a really good thing.
Is this a September eight meeting?
Not with us. This is a meeting that's, they're, they're asking the chairs to other.
I think it's planned for September eight. Is that correct?
I would assume so, I got.
I looked at their doodle poll, and it looked like the only one that responded was Chad, so two, three possible days, so I don't know if it's locked in the data.
Yeah, I think they did.
I got a Zoom invitation yesterday. That's what I thought you were sending me an email about. I got it yesterday for September eighth at seven PM.
Yeah.
And it conflicts with the Conservation Commission, the next Conservation Commission meeting. So, you know, I suppose that's okay if it's being taped and it can be watched after the fact.
Yeah.
But there are two meetings at the same time then, and I don't know how that fits with TKM.
Well, this is, it doesn't, this is a member of each board. It's not boards together meeting.
I think I know.
So it would be.
It means that someone from the Conservation Commission will not be attending. That's what it means. Because the Conservation Commission is meeting at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, just so water department is aware. I said misty in notes.
Okay.
Maybe I.
What date was it?
September eighth. Do you have conservation in your schedule?
I'll have to work.
Library, the phone system installation, like I said, reported last time was successful. All phones are working and have voicemail. The, as you put in one piece of technology, other ones kind of surface. So there has been some, I'll just say, continuous IT issues.
There's another problem.
In, right? The, it, it's going to be an ongoing thing because there was never really an IT plan, so we're, we're doing. Oh, I know, I understand that.
Okay.
The, you know, working with the library director, the library trustees are having a meeting on September eighth, as we just discussed. So there's, there's some controversy there, but we'll, we'll work it all out. I'm working as close as I can with Stacy in Guardian. That's kind of been a juggling match, considering what I've been going through with Guardian. And then we'll, we'll talk a little bit about Guardian. We've, we had downtime last week that I had reported to everybody that, that there was going to be some equipment and upgrades to the system. That all went successfully. The, I did not see any tickets to anybody on Monday morning, anybody report to you that there was some issues. So I think that was, that was a good thing, as far as I'm concerned. There's ongoing issues in regards to the telephone system here, which we're working on. And I am still working on other issues with other vendors within town hall. So that's another thing that you and I think we need to talk about more, to find out what we need to move forward. And outside of that, I think that's pretty much it. Hope I liked. I did want to bring to the board's attention that there was a lengthy newsletter that was sent out by the superintendent that covered their, what their plans are to start with this school year, which just started. And they also named some of the new staff that they had, in that you can find this newsletter that is on their website. It's dated Saturday, August twenty eighth.
Unless you have something, Ross, that he reported to you. Correspondence is next, and we have about six letters here. One is the Van Stan Preservation Committee. A letter announcing that they had been formed. Geraldine has left, but it looks like she is the chair of that committee. I guess the question is, how does that work? Can you have a private group updating a town building? Or structure? Any thoughts on that?
I think it's an awesome idea, but I'm, I would be concerned about liability, number one. Number two is that I would think that if there was going to be a committee formed with named on the, the towns in town, wouldn't it need to be something that the, the selectmen would have to organize? Can a, can a private organization create a, a town board or a committee? Yeah.
No, it has to be, should be reported by, there's only the select board, because you're probably in control.
Excuse me, what?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Don.
My understanding is it was supported by Parks and Rec and Rocky has been. It could be a working committee or a subcommittee. No, it could be a subcommittee of Parks and Rec if they wanted to do that. Is this the same as, was called the gazebo?
Yeah.
So my understanding is that they've had it analyzed and come up with some lead there, which will have to be addressed for the renovations. Probably an old lead, hey?
Right. Didn't they just renovate that a few years ago?
It, it's in, it's in horrible shape.
Oh, it is. I, I agree with you. It needs.
The back, the back railings have been screwed in so many times, they're just all spunkers.
But they put that addition on. It was maybe eight or 10 years ago. Well, they put that addition on. It was maybe eight or 10 years ago.
Yeah.
On the back of it. So they found lead paint that they didn't find last time then.
Something with lead in, I was guessing today.
They have structural engineer from other, and, and also do the lead paint test.
Okay.
Which, you know, that, that's where most of my questions lie, is the structural engineer would come out of the cemetery and parks budget?
So the, the subcommittee of Parks and, this is a sub, the Townsend Van Stan Preservation Committee is a subcommittee of Cemetery and Parks?
I don't know. Have they been officially appointed, or are they a group of volunteers that are sort of working on their own?
It was, it was a group, but they've, they've been working with Roger.
Well, I think I would want from Roger then, a declaration that they are a subcommittee appointed by Cemetery and Parks, as opposed to this other way around.
Yeah, because there has to be some sort of fiduciary responsibility, you know, because it, it says here that they're gonna be fundraising. So the fundraising needs, there has to be some checks and balances in regards to that. Would that be coming through the revolving fund for Cemetery and Parks? Yeah, see, that's, that's great. That all has to be.
I don't know the word from cemetery, if there's a separate one for parks, it could.
I think we need to talk to Roger.
But if they're spending taxpayer money at some point, then they're tied into all the procurement issues.
Right, that's what I'm concerned about, because the, the engineer that came out on, if, if it's taxpayer money that's paying for the engineer, then we, I would be concerned about procurement. I'd also be concerned about insurance and liability issues for the people who are doing the work on, on the Van Stan, too. I, I, I want it very clear that I think this is an awesome idea. It's a very, very good idea, but I just wanna protect the town.
I hate to stand in the way of
Me too.
good volunteers.
Me too.
We do have to.
I, I think we have to talk to Roger, and I think he has to declare it a subcommittee. And I think then the funds have to come in through Cemetery and Parks, as opposed to some private citizens group just going out and saying, I mean, could the land trust then start doing trail work on the, you know, and paying for it on other lands?
I think that is a possible solution. If they're totally separate from the town, and not using town funds.
So can, and does the, can they, is all you need, the permission from the board that controls the property?
I think we need to understand more what they're doing.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Once I know what they're doing, and how they're planning to do it, I could talk to an insurance agent to see if they are covered, or don't need to be covered, or what situation is.
Okay.
So I, I'm, again, I'm 100% for this, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, number one, a committee is formed. I wanna make sure they, they follow whatever the protocol is that they need to follow to be an official committee.
Because if we can do this, I always thought that we couldn't as private entities separate from the town. I mean, the same goes for shared streets and spaces. When we need to restripe bike lanes, can we have a private group fundraising to do that? So it, it, it.
Yeah, we, it was, it was a similar situation in Obrich, where the Van Stan was built in purpose of practical funds and just to the town. So these funds, I, I would expect to be very similar. They, they can be ready to donate it for the purpose. And the people carrying the insurance, of the, of the actual contractors that are gonna be touching, touching the Van Stan, and remaining, committing the rent.
Well, let me, let me, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think what's happening at the senior center is a good example of what happens when a private entity gets involved.
But there's an agreement between, a written agreement that had to be written between the private entity and the town. And so if this is similar, then there needs to be a written agreement understood between the town and the, who carries the insurance, who, how does it work? And so it took us a while last year to get that done. So I, I think that this is good, but I think that there's more to it than just this letter.
There was also historic, historical, to bring it, something that happened in the past. We had, if I remember correctly, a, a group of private citizens wanting to have a dog park in town. And at the time, the Board of Selectmen said that they would need to form, you know, they, they couldn't just do it on their own. They needed to form a committee, so the selectmen, you know, formed the, the dog park feasibility, blah, blah, blah. I don't know if that's the same thing or not, but that's.
I think it's a similar situation.
That's what I'm seeing, you know, I, I, not that I want any, like, I have any spare time to help anybody else, but I just wanna make sure that we're following charter, and we're following, you know, what we've done historically.
Laurie, do you have something to say? You have to unmute. I see your hands up.
Yes, I do, yeah. I've been replying, trying to get your attention. In reference to, first of all, like about 20 years ago or so, the Van Stan was refurbished by, I thought it was one of the Boy Scout groups, did it. And the Townsend Business Association was helping them. The difference between then and now is in the last few years, I think more than five, anyway, the lead paint law regarding contractors who are removing it have to be licensed to do lead paint removal. They didn't have to, used to be, but they do now. So that, back 20 years ago, when they painted and did whatever, they probably didn't even test for lead paint. But now you have to, if a structure is older than 1978, which that gazebo is. So, yeah, I would echo all of your concerns about liability and in a contract as well. I'm sure the building inspector knows that about the removal of the lead and working with lead.
Inspector knows about this group right now, so.
Okay. All right. Good work, everybody.
I see Carla has a hand up, but I don't know if it's for this. Okay, so I'm gonna go on with letters, so more to find out about the Van Stan Committee and how that works. Registries resignation, I think the Republican member of the Townsend Board of Registries has resigned. So I suppose we need to post for that. Probably Kathy. Conservation Commission, Jim DeRoien has resigned, so we should post for that, for Conservation Commission appointment. The resignation letter, this is Katie's, we've talked about that one already, from the senior center. Zoning legal notice. This is for building a deck within 1.1 feet of the side yard. And this is at 203 Main Street. The hearing is on September 29th at 6:15. And this is published in the Groton Herald. And also the last one is another zoning legal notice. So this is for the CBA for variance for three signs on the Hannaford Building, where only one sign is permitted, and that's what we currently have. And again, that is Wednesday, September 29th at 5:45 PM here in Town Hall. While it's a, it's a remote access virtual public hearing. So there will be a Zoom link posted on the website. And again, this announcement, or the legal notice is posted in the Groton Herald. And that is all I have under course topics. Our next meeting is September 21st, 2021, at 6:00 PM. So that's three weeks from now. We had three August meetings, and as opposed, and only one in September because of Labor Day week. And do I have a motion to review and sign Bill's payable warrants, and to sign them out of session for the weeks of September 5th and September 12th, and that includes payroll?
I make motion to sign Bill's payable warrants and motion to sign payroll and Bill's payable warrant out of session for the weeks of September 5th and September 12th.
Second, all those in favor?
Just sexting, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. And with that, is there a motion for a return?
I move that we turn at 8:23.
And I second all those in favor.
Just sexting, yes.
The meeting is over. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.